The cost for, uh, like the actual waste, the cost for recycling, the bulk rates and white bills as well as your, your waste. I don't want to go either way, but if you have any questions with regards to the pricing, I'll be glad to respond to you and ensure that you have the same information that you have in front of you. They have to bring their, uh, this phone to the curb so they have to call in providers to request their service. And some of them, they are willing, they do provide their services. Uh, on their request, they have an initial agreement and they do provide their services. Go through your presentation. Yes, sir. With their interviews, uh, how they took in with, with each provider?
They, summary and the key findings are, all have provided reporting to the city with the exception of, including TNR. So the next crawling report is due in the next couple of weeks or so. You will have a crawling report on the sales of how much we collected and how much was charged and an accurate, uh, report at the third quarter for two thousand and eighteen. They have, uh, shared with us that the rate of the liquidity of their customers between ten and fifteen percent. All vendors have offered to support the audience education. So they're willing to provide pamphlets, they're willing to attend meetings with the council, they're willing to come and do presentations at schools, uh, presentation at council and so on. Also, uh, vendors, I believe they have a real good point that, uh, we're also making a recommendation on this, that they would like to see a three years contract on the audience instead of having one year contract for the current audience. So allowing them to have a three years contract will allow them to invest better on their own methods of operations and I believe that would be beneficial for the city as well for them. Vendors have agreed to work to reduce the days of service in the city. So it means that we will not have this five days, the five working days throughout the, the week that all vendors would go over. So most likely it can be done between Monday, Monday through, or Wednesday. The audience, the compliance process, um, in the small chart where we, where we provide to you, like the providers submit the liquid list, then it goes to non-compliance, compile and give it to providers. Then the providers are going to contact by mail or email. So if somebody's delinquent, they can provide that information. Then the sanitation services, if it's no, we go to non-compliant, if it's yes, compliant. So the highlights, the partnership allows interested providers to improve market share and support compliance levels. We want, well minimize the list provided by the co-enforcement. We started with fourteen thousand, uh, at this point we are at five thousand and by going on that method, I think we can reduce the number of, of non-compliance. Recommendation of non-compliant list to co-enforcement for weeks after the end of the quarter. So we don't want co-enforcement to go all over and not have a one hundred percent accurate list and the flexibility to shorten process for troubled properties. The participation rates, when we started this program about a year ago, we started at fifty percent. Uh, we're pleased to announce that we are over twenty eight thousand residents being in compliance and it's about eighty percent of South Fulton households reporting with service by providers. So it's a, it's a decent increase I believe. The non-compliant rate, services continue to not payment between ten and fifteen percent. It's slightly higher than industry standards because rental properties, general turnover and so on. The process developed to address and enforce it necessary. I think if we do a partnership between the city providers, providers, co-enforcement and Jacobs, it will, we can be much more successful. Emphasize place on compliance with enforcement at last will be our last option. The participation rate breakdown. The hard numbers, estimate a thirty five thousand residential households within the city. Just over eight, twenty eight thousand households reported by providers with current services. Breakdown of those who have service, estimate about twenty eight hundred had service but terminated by providers, remaining forty two hundred, twelve percent not reported by providers with service. So we can use providers not served by the city currently, served by commercial providers, rental properties, junk turnover, vacant abandoned properties, and we will continue to identify, remove properties without permanent structure. The purpose of the exception with regards to sanitation ordinance. We have cases with numerous additional construction and up the bar. Co-enforcement in ram properties, often court cases to the mall. Parcel with no permanent structure, parcel with a motor vehicle that includes a trailer or living quarter, not exempt. Additional proposed amendments, outdoor receptacle requirement for convenience stores and new establishments, we take out service. I believe that's one of the biggest cases that we have where litter is a problem. As well as what, what I say before the three years contract instead of one year contract with the current providers. Recommendation, support resolution where open market service structure continues for the next three years. Work with, with providers to reduce days collection to curb within the city, except Monday to Wednesday. Core area, we co-enforcement to ensure audience compliance, ensure, ensure roll cards are removed from streets after service. Ensure service provided at every residence. Pursue passage of amendments to, develop comprehensive education plan and relationship with sec waters to promote clean public spaces. The timeline and next steps. Implement a compliance process with providers and co-enforcement. Work with legal department to define amendments to audience. Develop, develop, enhance relationship with activities with keep South Fulton Beautiful and others to promote clean, attractive community. Work with providers to reduce collection days, November sixteenth, uh, South Fulton cleanup day, and continue to respond to community calls and emails related to audience. Develop education plan, desire to reduce litter and enhance keep locations through partnership And I believe that the last play, fly was the timeframe. Yeah, the time, the timeframe. We've done the last quarter of two thousand and eighteen, the last two months in two thousand and eighteen, we presented the report, the first quarter for two thousand and nineteen, the second quarter for two thousand and nineteen, and we're coming to you to present the third quarter for two thousand and nineteen. The reason why we are a little behind is because vendors had to provide the result sixty days after the, uh, the current quarter. So under the new amendment is another thing that we need to look at, instead of having six days, we want to minimize to thirty days. With that, I'll, I'll be glad to respond, any question please may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay, um, my first question is about the financial impact statement. Have we done a financial impact statement on this proposal or either of the two ordinances that we have? I see financial impact statements for, for all my ordinances, but these are big ones. These are big things. Do we have a financial impact statement for any of these proposals?
We do. So the first is these have not been, uh, I guess, codified into law or any resolution.
So, uh, from, the first piece is that you had a, uh, financial impact on your original ordinance that we provided before you, uh, implemented it. For this activity, I don't think there is any necessary change to the financial impact or at least the cost to the city. Uh, what it does result in is additional revenue. And so if you like, we can break that down further. I think, uh, what you will see though is that the projected, uh, or the goal for the initial pilot of implementation was at eighty percent and after three quarters, you're actually at eighty. And so it's pretty simple to just look at the remittances of the funds received by the city and we've met that goal.
Okay, I, 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 there are three things that I can, um, there are three things that I can think of that we probably do want to look at.
Okay.
One is who will research and provide the list for the liquid service?
Who, I'm sorry.
So, so, so in the, one of the first, uh, things in the full chart is that.
Right.
Uh. I believe we're prepared to work with providers because they know, they have a list, we have a list as well.
They'll have to be a person, they'll, they'll have to be a staff person, someone on someone's staff, either theirs or ours. We'll have to compare all of the records and then when people say, I'm getting this, I'm getting this letter in my mail saying they're going to put me in jail, but I have service, which is what has happened already. Who researches that? Who sends over the list? Does it go monthly? Does it go quarterly? Who maintains that? That has to be a person. So that's a cost. Another cost.
So that's currently being done by the city now.
Right. Who, who, there's, so is there a single person?
Yes, there's a single person on Mr. Valenzuela's staff who actually manages that process now. So we sent out the letters previously, we received conflicting information and he audited it. In addition to that, the programs and performance staff audits the information he gets and then we bring it back to you as a part of the result.
So, so you're saying the implementation of this will not require any additional staff?
That is what I'm saying, yes, sir.
Okay, and then, and then my next.
I'd like to add to the survey.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't want to leave alone Jacob, but as part of the Jacob's contract, sanitation is all, is also part of the contract and they are also providing the whole support to make this program successful.
Okay, um, my next question is, uh, who will send out the mailing and who will do the PR campaign? Cause I think that we did it ourselves last time and that didn't, that didn't work out.
I think we didn't do it last time and that's why it didn't work out and so there's been.
Well, whatever we did, we need to pay more and do more.
And we're prepared to do that and we learned from it. But there's no additional cost to that.
Okay, so there's no additional cost to that. Who collects the fees? Are we going to pay for, if we have a new supplier provider, are we going to pay upfront and then they're going to collect it on the back end or they're going to expect, be expected to?
This presentation that you have, it doesn't reference to one single collector or multiple collectors. This is based on what the current quarter events dates. So at this, at this time, we are collecting the fees. The C O S of Fulton is collecting.
So this is just more of the same, this is, there's nothing, this, this proposal?
This, this is a report based on the prior report I can, I presented, based on the questions you raised and based on the party assessments that we have in the current trial.
So, so your proposal is just to keep everything the same for three years and then what, and then at, at year four, what happens?
So what happens is that the audience all mandated to contract with vendors for one year. And what we heard from providers is that a year is not enough to invest at a higher risk.
Okay, so pause, I'm sorry. You're saying the.
You didn't answer his question. So, hold, hold up, you didn't answer his question, hold on one second. So what your question is, is yes, this is more of the same, but it is a response to the directive of council at the last meeting to answer specific questions and bring back the results of quarter three and give insights into how this model could or could not work and what the deficiencies are.
Okay, so I thought this, I thought that this was at year four, this was going to move to something different, but it sounds like something different of the next two proposals, so I'll say my question.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good.
So you're recommending that we need the model like it is and then, uh, because of the compliance rate is so high, basically. But, but the, I understand that and I understand we're collecting fees and we're, we almost have a, uh, we have an eight percent compliance rate. The problem is that our residents have consistently complained about the current model not being affordable to them. And because of so many vendors being involved, uh, some of the vendors have taken advantage of this free market process and they have not offered affordable pricing to our residents. And so because we only have thirty five thousand residents, I do understand that you're in business to make profit. And so we have so many people with so many vendors in the process, it's hard to, with the free market, negotiate lower cost on behalf of residents. And so my, um, ordinance is the original ordinance that we were going with. Uh, it is an ordinance model after House, uh, Fulton County was going to do business.
Valenzuela.
And basically it's, it's requiring that we put a solicitation back on the street and we, uh, get, uh, vendors to respond to the solicitation. Now I do understand this, um, have dated emails, uh, back from November twenty eighteen. We have met with some of the service providers, uh, Mayor Edwards and I, and myself, and some of the service providers, we talked about the single, um, vendor and also we talked about zoning. The things with zoning is I'm not opposed to it, but I would love to see it in RFP process and for them, for them to come back and see what pricing we can get. And so I, I have done research and I have a request for a proposal, um, that I got from a template. And in this template, it does call for zoning prices. And so my question to you, Mr. Valenzuela, is if, and I know you're not knowing, I mean, I'm not asking you to be pro or pro for any model, but do you feel that if we have, uh, seven zones of all, do you feel that that will, uh, hurt some of the negotiation for, uh, to lower cost on behalf of our residents?
I think there is a two-part, uh, uh, to your questions. You know, we want to get the base providers and we want to drive the price down as well as we don't want to invest so much time from staff to be monitoring seven or ten contractors that have seven, ten different issues and then you use a multiplier, escalate it and you go into the cost, you go into the non-compliant, you go into not delivering, you go into multiple things. So if you allow, whatever mode you want to go, you allow a three years contract with whatever money you want to do, one year renewal, that's a three years contract. I think that gives them more leverage to provide, uh, a rationale on how they can drive the price down and how they can do better for the city.
And so if they were to go with, uh, we were to go with a single vendor and the single vendor would have the option to work with smaller providers, uh, will they have an option to determine like what providers will go in what, uh, zone at that point because we also want to minimize the amount of trucks that are on our roads that is, uh, impacting our infrastructure.
Right, it's typical that, uh, you know, but, but the information that we have, we not, we now have more detailed information with regards to pricing and with regards to what district they're serving into it. And it's, it is the nature of the business that typically when you have a bigger provider, they start absorbing the smaller providers, not necessarily they disappear the smaller providers, it's just, it's the nature of the business that we live in.
I kind of remember also thinking, you know, for the staff. So we're operating under this ordinance now, but if this is not the direction that the council wants to go in, then of course we would adjust. But some of the questions that you're asking are more prescriptive to the RFP wherein I believe that if, we would take the direction of the council. So if you want zones and you want it seven, then you would direct us to include seven within the RFP. If you want to require the, uh, respondents to bring on small businesses as a part of their business model, we would include that in the RFP. So it's kind of difficult to answer those questions without the clear directives, but I think we would respond in whichever, whatever way the will of the, uh, consensus of the body is.
So, Mr. Don, what I'm asking is, I, I think, I want, I'm, I'm in favor of the RFP, but I don't want to lock ourselves into zones if that's not the best thing for us to do. I want to put us, I want quality service and I want affordable service. Um, you know, we've tried to accommodate everybody but the resident affordability in this situation. And so I'm all about what's, what's, what's most affordable to residents at this point. And so what I'm saying that is there a way that we can put in a RFP for the solicitation for people to bid on, um, providing the service as a single vendor and then also pricing, providing the service broken out of two zones?
And what I'm saying is you can absolutely do that. The directive of the council is exactly how the RFP would be in there. So it would not require everyone to have zones, but you can make people do a proposal for either or. It is literally a request for proposals on the will of the council to administer sanitation services. So specifically what the full body agrees upon for the RFP is exactly where we would put in place, draft and deliver.
Okay, uh, I think it was, uh, I mean, the speaker's.
Thank you for your, um, presentation. Um, one of the things that I've heard from my residents is that we're concerned a concern about trucks being on the road every day because we have multiple providers. That's one of the biggest concerns. So if we do look at the zone model, I would want it to be that, for example, if you were serving, you know, District One, that all providers pick up on the same day so we don't have truck, you know, trash cans out every day. That's one concern. And the other thing, and I think it's kind of how it rolls out, that it's clear what the pricing is so that we don't have people saying that they are getting different fees because I think how we started, you know, we had people, providers rolling in at different points. And so people might've had a provider prior to us implementing, so you had a different price there. Then they had to advertise, it needs to be consistent. It's just an equity issue. And so I think for me, those are the two points. I'm not as concerned as, you know, I also hear residents say they want choice. So, you know, I'm a little torn about changing the model because we can be kind of taking our residents through this process. But again, no more trucks on the road, no more trash put up at different days, we, we need to fix that.
That's right.
So, so, um, I, I was a little tired, so I'm going to miss some of this. Whatever happened to the liaison person that was supposed to communicate between the providers and the city? Do we do away with that role or do we still have that?
Yeah, it's being, it's currently being done, currently being done by Mr. Valenzuela's designee as well as, um, a part of the Jacobs contract. And so we've got, uh, multiple people assisting on it, but the book kind of stops with Mr., or starts and stops with Mr. Valenzuela.
Okay. So what, what I feel like I'm taking away from the conversation is that the, this multi, I guess, provider model has been working as far as residents being in compliance. Correct, is that what you're saying?
In compliance, yes.
And then also we are, um, I guess, actually having revenue coming in for the city? So have we looked at just possibly if we could even the affordability of bringing it in-house as far as is this a function that the city can actually provide?
So I think that is what has been expressed by certain council members through the RFP process is the single provider model. Am I correct that you're asking, could the marketplace model be brought in-house and administered by the city or?
So what I'm asking is will we be able to stand up our own sanitation department? Pretty much, or solidly department. And I'm just asking because, you know, people have asked, well, there's a job, why we can't bring this in-house, those types of things.
I think the, the, what the marketplace shows is that yes, you can bring it in-house, but there are also, uh, upfront costs that you have to provide. And so I think that's where the balance has been. Because of the cities, uh, uh, our, our status now is a very young city and trying to make, uh, kind of trying to make right some of the past mistakes that we inherited, there's a lot of upfront costs that come to this and other services. And so short-term, which I would say is the next three to four years, you would be looking at either the RFP single model or the marketplace. And those are the two that we can afford right now with a vision of the future to stand up a, a internal sanitation department.
So as we are right now, where if we have the marketplace model?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so in that we still are allowing providers to, you know, create their own ratings and stuff like that. Are we able to do any modifications, uh, that are for city-specific here such as for seniors?
Yes.
Things of that nature?
And I know some of it may have missed, Mr. Valenzuela, if you could go back in the presentation, some of those recommendations that he made, uh, related to the marketplace model, I think the, the thing that we should probably do a better job of communicating to council is not only can you incorporate these into the marketplace model, you can also incorporate them into your RFP model, whichever one you choose. So if you were to remain in the marketplace model, you could require by ordinance or updating the ordinance that all eligible providers give senior discounts at a certain threshold. In addition to that, you could require that all eligible providers participate in beautification activities. You follow me?
Okay.
You can incorporate those things into your current marketplace ordinance. But if you decide that you believe that the, while we have a staff recommendation, the council may deem the, uh, single provider model as their preference. And if you do, then you could take some of these, we'll call them good ideas and make them requirements of the RFP as well. So it doesn't mean you have to choose between these recommendations, you're just choosing which model you want to incorporate them in.
But if you do keep the marketplace model, we can enhance this kind of industry.
Absolutely.
Uh, one other thing too, I do get a lot of, um, questions and concerns from seniors or, uh, people that want to take their trash to Merck. Have we considered, um, how we would do that, maybe providing them an opportunity? Cause I think before we talked about they showed a receipt. Have we kind of figured that out? Cause I get a lot of calls about that.
Right now, the audience doesn't provide any exceptions to the rules. And Merck Miles is not a place where citizens, citizens are to, uh, take their solid waste and state that I don't have a provider, but I take it to Merck Miles. So looking at those questions, uh, looking at Merck Miles, seniors and so on, like Mr. Donald stated, and I'm working with legal, in whatever direction we'll go, we're going to make sure that we come back to you and present a proposal to, uh, amend somehow the, the audience to make it a bit more clear for the providers, for some of the questions that we, uh, heard from the community and some items that I believe we should find out a bit better on the audience.
And when do you anticipate doing that?
It, it will be upon agreeing of what you're proposing and after all, uh, for us to take direction from, from you all, uh, perhaps once we know that we're going in one direction.
Well, I think one other item to kind of highlight, we, we kind of zoomed over and we didn't, we didn't fully answer your question. So with Merck Miles, there is a challenge to that and so we consulted with the city attorney throughout the process and the, the piece with Merck is, is that anybody who doesn't want sanitation services will say, I take my trash to Merck Miles. But how will you be able to provide evidence of that? And so that means that the city will have to create an additional mechanism that requires people to verify that they take their trash to Merck Miles, they spend the funds to discard it and they're not dumping it or doing et cetera, et cetera. And so Merck Miles may cost them fifteen dollars or ten dollars per week, let's go, we'll call it five dollars per week, but then providing the evidence and tracking and coordinating is going to raise that cost and is going to raise the cost of the city because we now have to have a separate evidentiary process, process. because we now have to have a separate evidentiary process just for Merck Miles.
Well, I think when we had the initial conversation before that they would have to provide receipts showing that they are actually using Merck Miles. And I know why that wasn't included in the ordinance because I thought it was. But either way, I get the part of you all saying that it's another step. But I think the residents, especially seniors, are very good about keeping their receipts and showing evidence that they are actually using the facilities because a lot of them are on fixed incomes. Let, I want to yield a counsel on the round.
This is when I think creativity is needed. Now I go to a car wash to just open a research drive to cascade. I pull my car up, they scan the barcode. We could look at some kind of solution like that. They know that I paid. And why can't we do something like that at my gross so that we're tracking? I mean, I signed up one time. Every time I go to there.
Well, I think we could, so I don't think that's out of the question. I think we could do it, you know. I wouldn't want to remind everybody where we worked and we came so far. But when we first implemented this, we probably had about three weeks to come up with the process to keep our loss funding in place. So it's a gradual process. And at the same time, let's also not forget that we did not have control over Merck Miles like we do now. And so now that we do, I think that's a great add-on and it's something that we can explore. You won't get any excuses from us. I think it's a great idea. Think it's something that we have talked about. The city attorney and I were just kind of chatting about what that process would be now. Now, I would ask for a reasonable amount of time to bring back that recommendation and incorporate it because we do currently operate on a month-to-month agreement with a provider at Merck. But I believe that that would bring them additional revenues so they probably chomp at the bits to be able to provide some type of registration on our behalf and verify, so.
So again, I, you said it's going to be a smart city. I wanted to look at smart solutions. And, yeah, I, we need that minimum look at what you're doing. It's so easy. You know, I don't even have to talk to a person. It's, when I pull up, it scans, it lifts the gate, I go in, come out. I mean, it's seamless. And we could be doing the same thing with our residents if they opted to use Merck Miles so we could be recording that they're using. And so now they're not burdened with trying to keep up, you know, with a bunch of receipts.
Yes ma'am. It is something that we're working. It's coming up with some revisions, some amendments as the city manager indicated. We're into month-to-month contract. It's not payable for the city, not for the contractor. So we're going to be making some recommendations coming, coming up to you.
Okay. I'm going to go back to the council.
All right, and here's my last question. So the RFP process and the new ordinance will take about, what, twelve months, twelve to eighteen months? How long will that process?
If we go to an RFP process, you have to advertise for four weeks. Another two, three weeks to assess the RFP, make recommendations, contracts, execution. Another eight weeks basically, so you got twelve weeks. Plus a couple services while we're free. I'm looking at the best scenario, it's not less than four months.
For implementation, so the trucks will be, so within four months?
Not less than four months.
Less than four months. We will be able to pick a provider and be able to start.
That's not, excuse me.
So that's what I'm trying to get justification on. So we can, we'll still be in this open market service structure for an additional how many months? So we can determine what modifications to put into that ordinance? And then if we do move to a RFP process, when, how long will it take to implement?
And council member, I think we should probably answer that differently. So if it takes four months to craft, develop, and put out the RFP, that doesn't mean they're going to hit the streets in four months. He did not answer that question accurately. That's four months to be able to put the RFP on the street. You still have to evaluate it. You've got to bring it back for you guys with the recommendation. You've got to award it, finalize the contract, and then implement services. So I think it is probably more reasonable to say it's a six to nine-month process. And that is a fairly aggressive timeline, but it's also one that we implemented previously before we thought it a safer activity at the time to go with this model. So I think it would be fair to say six to nine months from an agreement for the council. If you decided to go that way, six to nine months, once you make a decision, for us to deliver the product fully back to you and they be able to deliver services.
Okay, Mr. Valenzuela, and I think you were given a RFP that I had given to Assistant City Manager.
No ma'am, I have not read your proposal or the other proposal that you mentioned. I have not read just for the matter of fact or that I want it to be neutral with.
No, 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 no. The city man, Assistant City Manager stated that she gave, used the RFP in her office when the two of us were in there together. Do you recall that?
Now I recall the conversation, but I have not read.
You haven't read it, but you received it.
I have to look at my files, but I recall the conversation. I recall the conversation we had.
Okay. We're going to talk. We're not going to play games. Okay, but you did admit to that when you were in there. And I'm just asking the question. You do have another RFP, which is about the zones, the seven zones?
Yes.
Yes, he does.
Yes.
I'll look at the files and if I receive an absolute set, I have it.
Is Ms. Melanie's not here today?
She, no, she's still in training.
Okay. But anyway, we're going to get past that because I do know you have. Also, what I would like to say, we were talking about the zones and right now we're dealing with the marketplace model. And if we're adding the zones, we're just, in other words, there would be, what I hear them saying is like different providers, but there would be one provider per zone because everybody would be bidding. You would have numerous people bidding saying on one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, but only one person will get a zone. Okay? So my question is, this is like, it's more or less almost the same thing as what we're doing now. But you're just having separate individuals or two, you might have two people doing one district. But basically, all of it's the same thing.
Right. I follow you. Right now you have three providers providing services to one zone. And if we go to zones, you have one provider per zone.
One truck going into one district at that time. Okay, so looking at that piece, how, how do you think we could? And I think Melanie, what she was saying was it would not take us to have to go, all we would have to do is amend?
So, yes, so I think what you're saying is, is that if, assuming, of course, you guys haven't made a decision, but if you stay with the marketplace model, what you're asking is to implement zones within that model, could you allow people to then compete within the marketplace and one person be established within a zone? That is correct. You could do that. And it might clean up some of the concerns about the different trucks. Because if one provider was to win the award or be selected, then they would be the sole provider for that entire zone and let's say the two or three communities that are in the zone or however it is. So, yes, you could do that. And based on your ordinance now, I believe it's, is it thirty days or sixty days to?
Notice.
Notice, yeah. So it's thirty days notice. So let's say you came up with this piece in the ordinance. We'd have to develop the process to implement it, but probably within about a ninety to a hundred and twenty days you could implement, yeah. It may be quicker. I would just say you always kind of give a little caution because you want to roll that stuff out and not have interruption of service because that would cause us a different problem.
But the only thing I'm just saying, I don't want us to go back to where we were before with the arguing about one provider and leaving the other people out. I want to at least, hopefully, we'll be able to have something where everybody can be in and be a part of this process.
I think if you did zones, and we haven't dived deep into it, I think Mr. Valenzuela, as he mentioned, he's received the product but hasn't looked at it closely. If you stayed with the marketplace model and you implemented zones into it, I would just say you might want to include some of these other recommendations as well because it would help to make it a cleaner process.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you know, it's, I'm just saying that thinking out of the box, we've got to come up with something for everybody because we cannot say that one provider, I think we went down that road before as well, having one provider allowing other people to subcontract under them. It did not happen. So what I'm saying is let's give everybody a chance. And I'm also looking at the insurance. Did you have something to do with that going up or something? I'm looking at it going two-point-five million for liability and?
I'm not sure. We'll have to check with the risk.
Well, I talked to him today and he said he didn't change anything.
So how did it go?
I found the whole one. Yeah, we brought it down to one million. And when I looked at it, what's in here?
Mr. Malazza said it's still one million of what their, their minimum requirement.
Okay, well, in both of these, they have two-point-five million and then?
Those are different than his.
Yeah, both of what?
We have three old presentations to do.
Yeah, I don't, so those, we don't have, this is not the staff portion. So the staff portion of what you have right now in the marketplace is one million. It has not changed.
Okay, so that's where I am.
Okay.
Let's rectify with that. My prior response to you, I have received two of the ordinancees for my review. I have not reviewed those, but I have discussed with our legal attorney.
Okay. So, yeah, so the one million, the one million is in place. It has not changed. And so those are just proposals. They're not in the law. And they are, those are council proposals and you have the opportunity to change them, merge them, do whatever you like.
I know it could be work, but what I'm saying is I just want to make sure, hope that everybody is going to be able to work.
Absolutely.
Quick question. The apartment complexes, are they considered commercial or residential?
Commercial, right. It's still residential, but we have worked with some of the rentals and some of the owners of those complexes. And it's a different dynamic what they use. So they're under the commercial contract, they're under residential contract. So some are, some of them have one contract, some of them, it varies. Not everybody have the same dynamic, like a contractor, A might provide a dumpster or their own mechanisms for solid waste and everybody puts right there and one takes that out. But on those instances, each, each of them pays one fee, so we're requesting to be treated as residential. So commercial is like for industrial cases, like on FIB, on where you have the contractors or Walmart or Home Depot and so on.
I've never heard it done that way. Have any of you trash people ever heard it done that way? Okay, I'm going to go.
It's simple to say that what has been done is they've been allowed to use their vendors that were qualified under residential, but I don't believe all of them are registered. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so that is one of the recommendations in the ordinance, in the ordinance, to allow those folks to qualify as commercial and then you can, they can contract with them directly and still pay the fee.
Okay, two more questions. What, why are we keeping, if we are not allowing people to use Merck Miles openly, why are we keeping it open?
We got the directive to do that, but I think the intent has always been to utilize Merck Miles.
So in the time, I just want to ask, in the time that we kept it open, how much have we spent as a city to keep it open? How much have we made?
Well, I do have the information.
You have it, okay.
Yes, I do have it. I have that information. And for the contract with, to operate Merck Miles, it goes from twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars. That's the cost.
A month?
Yes.
So, so we kept it open May, June, July, September, October?
Right, it's still open. So we're going into a monthly contract with them. That's why we're assessing that monthly contract to make some changes and make it attractive for others to.
So far, that's fine. I just wanted the numbers. So far, we spent around two-hundred thousand dollars to keep Merck Miles open. How much have we made keeping it open?
The math is, we're even. We're not losing money, we're not making money, but it's been subsidized pretty much for the solid waste, for the five percent ordinance. That's what we use.
Mr. Colley, I think your point is valid and I think that goes back to Councilmember Gumm's point and compensation. The goal of Merck Miles was not just to have it as being revenue-neutral, but to incorporate people's ability to use Merck Miles as our broader marketplace model. And so it's revenue-neutral now, but if we can find a way to incorporate people being able to use it, it will now be able to generate revenues for the city.
Okay, if those are not already in our monthly financial reports, I would love to like start seeing that. And then just, the last one is just a note. We heard four to six months, six to nine months for the contract. I think just to echo what Councilman Jackson says, however long it takes to do it, you need to add another month or two on for us to make a decision as a council. That's about how long it takes us to make these kind of big decisions. And then I'll go back to council.
Thanks. Real quick, thanks for this updating presentation. I know a lot of people have been, have been wanting to see and understand the functionality of this and where we plan to go as far as our direction. And I heard a lot of suggestions from my colleagues, but I want us all to keep in mind the rally cry that we made to our constituents to go out and do the things that they've done on their own. And I know that there are people who are watching this who couldn't make it from several districts and subdivisions from Waldorf, Cedar Grove, all the way over to township. And they negotiated these very inexpensive rates with these various haulers to service them. And I'm just listening to the comments and watching the presentation to hear that we've, we have thirty-five thousand homes, twenty-eight thousand in compliance. That's a large feat from where we once worked. And listening to that, to know that we are at eighty percent of compliance, that should cut down a huge amount of the needle dumping. I wish there was something that we could show, some type of measurable that we could at least demonstrate to our constituents, you know, the direction because a lot of them are in a gray area as to why they have to do this. The Merck Miles situation, a lot of the seniors in my community especially, who put their trash either next door, you know, and they have worked out something with their neighbor or either were used to going to Merck Miles. But I just want to end my comment with, you know, we have some smart people up here, but then we have SMEs and subject matter experts. And I see this as a recommendation from y'all. And I'm also listening very closely to our city manager saying, if it's the will of the council, because he said this about three times, and it's almost like we've given you a recommendation, but if it's your will, we're making our bid and we're going to have to take the lick if it goes to disarray. And that is a gray area that I don't want to be in when there's people who are smarter than me about this issue. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I understand the St. Will, Leo's here.
Yes, presentation by the staff of St. Will University.
Mayor and council, I requested for St. Will to come and present before council and mayor's agreement. And I'm requesting that we approve my work session. I did, this is St. Will, along with Chief Meadows and a couple of his colleagues. Well, not colleagues, a couple of employees. And I think we all have an interest in offering education to our employees. And while we have budgetary constraints at this time where we can't, you know, really offer what we want to offer, I think St. Will here in the presentation is, is a great start. And it's also an opportunity for us to have a relationship with a university, well-known university that does cater to not only for public safety, but ex-military personnel. But I think they have a benefit that will benefit all employees. And so, thank you for coming and I'll turn it over.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Edwards, Councilwoman Willis, thank you for this opportunity. And uh, good evening to council members. We do appreciate the time to stand before you today. My name is Natania Dabble. I'm the Associate Director for St. Leo University, Atlanta Education Center. I do have with me Ms. Candace Whitfield, who is our Assistant Vice President over our worldwide division for St. Leo University, and Sherrod Campbell, who is our Assistant Director of Admissions for the Atlanta Center. Today we have come to present to you, um, St. Leo University, um, offering a preferred partnership with the City of San Furtan. So, um, St. Leo University is Florida's first Catholic-based university. We are liberal arts, serving people of all faiths. The university itself is located in um, just north of Tampa and St. Leo, Florida. We do have sites in Atlanta, Gwinnett, currently in Duluth, and in Savannah, Georgia. So St. Leo University has currently been ranked top amongst regional universities. Um, you can find that information on these US News and World Information sites, where you will see uh, that we have been designated among several different high-ranking universities. St. Leo currently has over ninety-two thousand alumni members in all fifty states of America, the Washington DC, three US territories, and seventy-six countries worldwide. We are one of the nation's leading higher education providers to the US military. We have over three thousand online learners, um, currently from all over the world. Additionally, our overall enrollment has exceeded fifteen thousand students and we have approximately thirteen hundred faculty university-wide to assist with facilitating our educational goals. The Atlanta Educational, Education Center is one of more than forty education centers located nationwide. We have maintained a presence in the Atlanta market for over forty years, starting out as military installations on Fort Man Pearson, Fort Gillum, and Dallas Air Force Base. After moving from those installations, we did establish sites in Duluth, Georgia, and Marietta, Georgia, and Marrow, Georgia. We have recently consolidated two of those sites and opened our new Atlanta location. We currently, as I said before, have locations in Duluth, which is Gwinnett, Georgia, Savannah, and now our new Atlanta site. So here's our mission and values. Of the university, we do seek to offer balanced growth in mind, body and spirit for all members of our community. The university as far as seeks to create student-centered environments, in which level of learning is of prime importance for all of us. You will traditionally see all six of these core values in everything that we do at the university. So the Atlanta Education Center specifically, we opened in January of twenty nineteen. We are located in the Business District of Atlanta, located uh, very close to the Lambert City Center. We're fitted with state-of-the-art technology, which helps to facilitate learning, including two computer labs, a testing center, a learning resource center, which also houses tutoring services, and a cybersecurity lab. Our center is approximately twenty-three thousand square feet. We do offer flexibility in learning, where um, students are able to take classes on ground, through video teaching technology, internet-connected classrooms, and through online classrooms as well. All of our classes are offered in an AV format. And of course, anybody that knows the city of Atlanta knows that parking is a commodity. We do offer free parking to all the students that um, attended our city. So here are some of the programs that we offer at the Atlanta Education Center. We do offer degrees, um, going from associates to master's degrees. We have various subjects, which you see highlighted here. We also have additional offerings which students can take as a flex offering. What that means is that it may be an online degree that students can still participate in and receive the face-to-face service directly from our um, staff and faculty at the center. I am excited and we had the opportunity to talk to Councilwoman Willis about um, our new micro-credentialed program that we are launching in spring of twenty twenty. Um, this program would allow students to embark upon many course from um, learning classes. So what they would do is they would have the opportunity to earn a badge or a certificate once they have completed their skill attainment. These um, classes could range from five weeks to eight weeks, just depending on what needs to be learned. We also have the availability to structure micro-credentiales based off of your needs as a organization as well. So some of the um, programs that we have offered, or that we will have uh, coming up in the spring, I'm sorry, are corporate security, grantsmanship, and project management. Those are the ones that have been developed by the university that are planned to launch. But like I said, if you have something that you need for your organization or one city employee, that's a discussion that we can definitely have and work with our um, design team to develop something for you. The micro-credentiales will also have the ability to be offered in different modalities, including one site at the Atlanta Center, online, and also one site at an established community employees if you have um, enough employees to start at one time. So here are some of our public safety programs, which I know is of great interest. Um, we do offer criminal justice as an undergrad and graduate programs with several different specializations. Also as a flex offering, we have emergency management and emergency disaster management on the graduate level, which includes fire, science administration. So with the preferred partnership, the benefits to this is being able to offer your employees educational benefits at no cost to the city. We would offer ten fifteen percent educational uh, tuition discount to all your employees, whether they're sworn, sworn, non-sworn, um, of political stature, you know, whoever they are within the city, they are able to take advantage of this. They will have access to our center, our academic advisors, admissions counselors to assist them in the process. They will receive evaluation of any post-credits they receive. Military and prior college transfers will also be um, evaluated based on our catalog guidelines. They will also receive fee waiver for all their applications coming in. Additionally, you will receive usage of meeting space at the Atlanta Center. We just ask that you, you know, provide us leeway to make accommodations for you, but the space is available to our partners. We also provide invitations to any institutional workshops that we, we have. Some of the prior trainings that we've had, um, have been human trafficking, resiliency and mindfulness. We've also recently had entrepreneurship workshop, international business. And we currently have running a certificate of grant right that is happening, so you would definitely have access to that. You will also receive priority invitation to center held events. We currently have um, an upcoming career fair, which you have actually been invited to. Um, we would, anytime we have any events like that, we do extend opportunities to our partners to come in and participate. We also have networking events, where you will have the opportunity to come in and network with other community partners you may have, as well as with students or anyone, um, that, you know, you may want to have access to. Um, upon signing the preferred partnership agreement, our university will release a press release, which will be posted to various media outlets, including newspapers, online media, social media, and um, have a social media platform. We would like to link that to ours as well to make sure our followers and viewers have access to your main website. Um, additionally, we would like to um, have your city personnel have the ability to participate in central-related speaking engagement. So you will have the opportunity to come in, speak before our students, um, and other neighborhood constituents, where you can come in and share about your organization, share about your positions, um, and of course be able to relate what you do to the degrees that we offer to our students. So, try to make it quick. What we require from you, like I said, is no cost. We would just ask that you highlight St. Leo as one of your, as your partner or your city internet or your HR portal as a benefit, as an education benefit. Um, we would like direct approval opportunities at any city events you may have, so if you're having something big wide that you allow vendors to come to, we would like to be able to participate in that. Also opportunities to share information at any of your sites. So I saw that you had tables set up outside, something similar to that. If you have sites that you're willing to let us come to, we would be more than happy to come in and uh, provide this information to your employees to help them understand what the benefits is for them. Alright, so uh, with the tuition discount, all of your employees, like I said, is able to utilize it as long as they're employed with you. Um, they must just provide their ID and pay stuff. The tuition is based upon um, the current catalog and I provided the link and the form for you as well in the package. These are some of our current partners that we have. We have over twenty-five more, city, state, and law enforcement agencies, and over a hundred and forty partners nationwide. So with that being said, we would love to partner with you and provide this educational partnership and I am open for any questions that you have.
Of course, Mr. Khalid. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
You know, you took a time to people to their job and was all concerned about salary. And now people are really concerned about that also, but what benefit is this? And I think that anything we can add to the benefits, uh, the people that work for us creates the longevity in our important staff and it's just a very good thing to do. And I wanna thank you for this opportunity to come in and know this enough, uh, see what you offer and I, I, I think we should give this a lot of consideration. Mr. Khalid?
Mr. Mayor, I wanna second that. Councilwoman Willis, thank you so much for putting this together. Um, you know, for, for several budgets now they're asking about benefits and I know that we can't really afford to uh, to do it really, but this is such a critical bridge until we get there, so I just pray for it. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Willis?
Thank you, uh, to my colleagues. I just wanna just highlight one thing I thought that was, that was to me awesome. Um, you know, our public safety, both police and fire, they take a lot of certification classes. And uh, for St. Leo to take that into consideration and give them some college credit, uh, look at the certifications they have taken and give them some college credit towards their academic degree, I just thought was amazing. And so, um, this is a win-win for you and us and the employees.
Okay, thank you so much.
I thank you.
Mayor, while she's here, can I make a point of clarification?
Yes.
So in the ordinance that I drafted, I put that the benefits would be received by residents as well as employees. Should I strike out the resident section?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just give that a reminder when you guys adopt, if you adopt tonight.
Alright, thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the November twenty-sixth and the December twenty-fourth work session in regular meetings.
In discussion?
Uh, I brought this on because I didn't, I, we needed to have thirty days in case we're gonna make any changes for this meeting. The November twenty-sixth meeting is the day before, no, two days before the Thanksgiving holidays and the twenty-fourth meeting is the day before Christmas holidays. So I needed to know which way we're counseled.
I made the motion to cancel the December twenty-fourth.
Well, it's on the agenda for later, but I...
That's, that's gonna be my motion.
Yeah, we want to discuss it.
I just said December twenty-fourth. Y'all wanna, somebody else wants to amend my motion, I'm open to that.
So.
It's on, it's on the...
It's on the, it's on the, um, it's on the regular agenda, but I want to discuss so we know what we're gonna do when time to vote on it.
Okay.
The next...
Well, you should probably have a discussion right here.
That's on discussion, I heard, it's on, it's on the process.
But for what we decided we were...
Yes, you should have a discussion before you get...
That's the purpose.
Well, I think, I think what he's asking is if, if we were to eliminate both those dates, Mr. City Manager, how would that affect your ability to execute whatever you have? Those are two zoning areas.
Yes, and so I believe that we are, you've counseled those in the past and what we've done is simply adjusted those calendars and brought those items forward sooner or identified a special call meeting. I tell you, we have never talked about it this early, which is pretty good. Um, so, yeah, that's exciting, but uh, I think what, what we would likely do is adjust our calendar to again bring those items forward at the November, at either the November twelfth or the December uh, meeting, December tenth meeting. And I believe last year, I don't wanna speak out of term because I don't have it in front of me, but I believe what we did is put both of those uh, zoning activities or the ones that were ready on the December tenth meeting. So the one that would have been on December, on November twenty-sixth and what would have been in December got moved up.
Is a huge word in there, very ready and...
I don't have anybody assigned on my side.
Yes.
I was just uh, asking uh, if we could, could look at the National League of Cities uh, uh, date to make sure we don't have a conflict with council meeting, because I know some of us will be going traveling for National League of Cities. So is that something...
What's the date for National League Cities?
The twenty, the nineteen through the...
Twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
No, not twenty-sixth.
Uh, it's not that long. And Mayor, you're going too, so...
Not that long.
Nineteen through twenty-second.
Okay, so that's on the third week of November, so we should be good. We should be fine. That's not on, it's not on council meeting.
Sorry?
Okay, I passed on.
I would suggest that maybe to do a special call meeting before December fifteenth, because you're looking at two months of zoning cases and just deal with the zoning cases by themselves. And honestly, the rate we're going, we're gonna move to that anyway, probably. We don't need to as we continue to get these applications, just deal with them at one time.
Okay, uh, Gumm?
No.
Anyone else? So where I'm, I like to go.
Mayor, there was one point of clarification. The December meeting, the November meeting that was counseled last year, we moved it to December and the December um, meeting, uh, the zoning cases and all of those things just actually moved to January. So you did the same thing last year, but you moved November, uh, the last meeting, that zoning hearing was heard the first meeting in December. The one that was at the end of December was actually heard in January.
No, I'll let yours go back. Make, make your motion.
No, no, just know what you're gonna do when it comes up on your agenda. Okay, the next item is the discussion of amending the sanitation ordinance by um, Mayor Edwards and Willis. Councilmember Willis?
I mean, I, I think that we need to figure out, I think we probably just need to uh, take that offline, both, I think, um, and, and figure out how we're gonna do it, because it's just too much to try to figure it out right now. Okay, so uh, Councilwoman Jackson, um, and, and I said we're just gonna take it offline, figure out how we can just get it all, address it all in one order, so we don't have to, it's too much to figure out right now.
I, I, I agree with that and I think that it's only like two lines different in O'Neal. I think we have a discussion to get back to.
Okay, that is the work session agenda.
Well, I mean, it's on the agenda. I would like to, to speak on that. It's on the work session agenda, so, so we're discussing. Um, and I would just like to say for the record, I would like to see a financial impact statement. Um, I am concerned about the questions that I asked before, they, they still persist. Uh, will we pay the costs upfront in RFP? Will we subsidize new service? And who will be doing the collection? Because one of, one of the points at which this fell apart last year was when we were told that the county would not do the collections. And then, and then a few of the, uh, a few of the people who were interested in bidding said that they would not bid on the service unless we paid for it in full upfront. That was, that was definitely a, that was definitely a thing. There, there weren't that many providers that could absorb the cost of providing the service without the guarantee of one hundred percent collection. So that is one of the reasons that we ended up uh, here where we are now. collection. So that is one of the reasons that we ended up, uh, here where we are now. Um, and this, because this market, this market wave was a wave of allowing providers to only collect from people who they had actually, only to provide service to those people that they had collected from. Um. Yeah, that's it.
So I would ask that Councilmember Kalid send all of those, uh, suggestions in email to the city attorney, Mayor Edwards, and, um, Councilmember Jackson, and the attorney, and myself. Uh, one clarification, the county, uh, Officer Burden, Tax Commissioner Officer Burden, never said he would not collect on our behalf. He agreed to collect on our behalf. I met with him twice. Uh, but what he did not agree to do is put his sanitation billing on property tax bills. And the reason he does not, he is not gonna do that. He does not do it that way for the city of Atlanta. Uh, and he does not do it that way, uh, for the city of San Springs, uh, that he collects for. And the reason he does not do that is because, uh, a long time ago, when he used to do that, you had a lot of problems with the mortgage companies, um, getting the sanitation billing mixed up with escrow. And so last year, there was legislation to mandate that you could not bill sanitation on, um, sanitation bills statewide, because some cities, they do it. But in Fulton County, as the tax commissioner, he does not do that. And so he, uh, suggested that we determine when we wanted those bills to hit. And he suggested that when we send those bills out in July, since most of our property tax bills will hit mailboxes in September.
In further discussion?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry, do that one more. Uh, Mr. Treasurer, I, I, I didn't want to know, how, how much money do we collect in commercial franchises?
I can send that one to you in details, to explain what, what we have and what we are collecting for each one.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, can you break the question? Okay.
That is the work session agenda.
I move that we, uh, recess to, um, executive session, uh, to, to discuss real estate, personnel, and litigation.
Set.
Probably second, in further discussion. I'd like to make a minute that executive session starts at six thirty.
I would like to, uh, say it starts at six twenty-five. Uh, that will give us, uh, I think, we don't want to.
Eight minutes is good. I'll, I'll take eight minutes.
Alright. Yes.
So Mayor, except for all those, in further discussion, all those are paid and passed. Your name is?